I call to order this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. We have all members present and our student representatives, so I declare a quorum. At this time, I'd like to invite a pre-K student from Emma K. Dow, Charlotte Beckett, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence. Charlotte?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for its existence, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, Charlotte. Thank you for being here. Do you have some folks with you this evening that you would like to introduce to us?
This is my sister Abigail.
Abigail.
My dad and this is my mom. This is my dad.
That's the boss of Emma K. Dow? Well, Charlotte, it's wonderful to have you here this evening. Charlotte, how old are you?
Four.
Four. Now, you and I spoke a little bit before the start of the meeting, and I told you that I remember that you were downtown with us at a county commissioners' meeting, and you did something very special there. Do you remember what you did?
I read to everybody.
You read to everyone, yes, and you did a fabulous job. I take it you like to read. Do you like to read? Are there other things you enjoy doing?
Um, yeah.
Could you tell us something you enjoy doing when you're not reading?
Um, playing.
Playing, uh-huh.
I like the color.
You like the color, uh-huh. I can tell you're into fashion. I've been admiring your boots there. They're quite stylish.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Colleagues, do you have anything you'd like to ask of Charlotte? Charlotte, do you have any pets at home?
Uh, yes.
What are they? Do you have cats or dogs?
I have one dog and her name is Lulu.
Lulu, that's cute. Do you know what kind of a dog she is?
She's a hound.
Well, Charlotte, can you see yourself up there?
Yeah.
Uh-huh. Want to give yourself a wave? Charlotte, thank you so much for coming. Mr. and Mrs. Beckett, thank you for being here.
You're welcome.
Thank you, dear. Okay, at this time, we'll have approval of this evening's agenda.
Move for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Bickford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. All those in favor. Okay, we have unanimous approval of the minutes and the student member concurs. I'm sorry, of the agenda. Approval of the agenda and the student member concurs, and we'll move on to approval of the minutes.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, March 19th, 2019.
Thank you, Mr. Gessert. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Are there any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? Okay. Vote is for approval of the minutes. All those in favor? Okay, we're unanimous.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, March 19th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Are there any additions or corrections to that set of minutes? If not, all those in favor of approval. Okay, we're unanimous and the student member concurs. Thank you. And next on the agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Tonight, we have three items I'd like to bring to the board's attention. In a few minutes, I'll be asking Dr. Jessica Reinhardt to come forward to share some information about our 2019 Carson Scholars. Following that, we'll have Johnna French come forward, tell us a little bit about School Library Month, and I think she's brought a couple of representatives with her from high school and elementary. But first, we want to begin with some recognition with our Handle With Care program. We started this a little over a year ago or so, maybe, and I'm going to invite Robyn Handler to come forward. Also, we have Sheriff Mullendor here tonight, Chief Kiefer, and Chief, looks like you brought a bodyguard, so you can bring her up forward to him. So, Rob, if you come to the table and share a little bit about Handle With Care, we just want to offer a little recognition to them and invite the board members to go down front here in a few minutes.
Good evening, Dr. Michael, board members, and Christopher. Washington County was the first Maryland county to implement Handle With Care. If a law enforcement officer encounters a child during a call, that child's name and three words, Handle With Care, are forwarded to the school before the school bell rings the next day. Since the beginning of the school year, we have received 166 notifications involving 278 students who were either a witness or involved in some traumatic event. Handle With Care promotes safe and supportive homes, schools, and a community that protect children and help traumatized children heal and thrive. I first would like to acknowledge Renee Streeter, the Administrative Assistant to the Executive Directors for Elementary and Secondary Education, for joining me and sending Handle With Care to notifications sometimes at 4:00 in the morning so that schools have this information before the start of the school day. Handle With Care would not exist without our partnership with law enforcement. It is my honor to introduce Chief of Police Kiefer, Sheriff Mullendor, and Heather Alshire.
Thank you. We are very honored to be able to work on a program like this. We understand that trauma is what drives the behavior in adults later in life, and being able to have this wraparound service for these kids early and often is the hope that that's what will break the cycle of them growing up and getting into drug addiction or criminal behavior and things like that. So, this is just one program of many, but this is one that's very needed, and having that partnership with the Board of Ed and having the partnerships across every aspect where these kids are touched is really what we do and what we need to do here for that. So, I'm very proud to be sitting next to Robyn, who spearheaded this and is very passionate about it. She keeps us on our toes if we don't seem to be following through with some things sometimes, and she makes sure we do. So, I need that and we need that. But I want to thank her and I want to thank Heather Alshire, who's sitting down to my left. She spearheads that from inside the department for us and makes sure that our officers are staying on top of that. So, it's a great program, and I'm very glad that we are partnering with this.
Well, thank you. I don't know if I can do quite the same job that Charlotte did, but I will try. Just wanted to thank Robyn, first of all. Robyn put together a presentation at North High back in September of 2017 that I attended, and Chad Nabyer and Mrs. Dar from West Virginia actually did the presentation. They're the ones that actually developed the program in West Virginia. I was so moved by what I saw and the fact that, you know, we are going to be having some intervention with the kids who are experiencing a traumatic event of some sort. They don't necessarily know what that is at the school, but they know that they've been involved in some kind of an incident. And the fact that, you know, they're just giving that little extra tender loving care for that day, I think, says volumes, and that child, I'm sure, appreciates that as well. We got also a little bit of a slow start, and I had to add my name to the email list so that I knew when they were emailing, and after I did that, miraculously, we started getting a bunch of them through in the sheriff's office, and so we've been involved in that program since the beginning. I will say also, for Robyn's sake, that the state of Maryland and Governor Hogan picked this program up as a best practice and also a statewide practice, but Washington County was the pioneer of that in Maryland, and we're very proud of that and very proud of Robyn for initiating it.
I would just like to say, 17 of my 19 years at the Hickers Home Police Department have been within the schools, so I've been a school resource officer within that timeframe. And the information that this brings to the administration, to the staff, to the teachers just on a daily basis is amazing. You can have a kid that might have missed five days of school and you had no idea before why they had missed school, and now, when you have a Handle With Care, you can reach out to your resource officer or you can just reach out to whoever you might have in your area and contact that child's family and see what's going on. So, as far as attendance and things like that and knowing what's going on with that family at the time has been a big help and a big resource.
Well, we thank all of you for your support, and Robyn for your leadership in kicking this off. Unfortunately, I get those notices almost every day. You know, I try to say a little prayer for the kids and things like that, just thinking about, I don't know what happened, just know that something happened and one, two, three children in the family were affected, and I know that our school, you know, gives them a word to, you know, offer a little tender loving care for that child. So, it's a great program. It doesn't work without the cooperation of everybody. Board members, I'd like to invite you to go down front. We'll recognize the team here, and then we'll move into our Carson winners after that and School Library Media.
Can you just a second? I have no minute.
So, I think we have certificates we want to offer you. If you just come forward, just ask Chris to recognize each one of you, and we'll stand here for a photo. Thank you, Chief Kiefer, and Sheriff Mullendor.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
One more, one, two.
Congratulations and thank you again.
Good evening, President Williams, Vice President Stauffer, Dr. Michael, members of the board. This evening, we are recognizing both new recipients of Carson Scholar honors as well as recognized Carson Scholars. We're going to ask that each student remain at the front with the board members until all students have arrived at the front. We'll take one picture, okay? So, the Carson Scholars Fund receives applications from bright, talented, and dedicated students throughout the nation. The applicants are nominated by their school based on their high academic achievement and commitment to their communities. With this honor, the students receive a $1,000 college scholarship and recognition package. The following Washington County Public Schools students have been named this year's Carson Scholars. Madeline Mills, grade five, Potomac Heights Elementary. And Gabrielle Ryder, grade 10, Smithsburg High. The Carson Scholars Fund also announced students who have achieved recognition status for 2019. These are previous Carson Scholars who continue to meet the high standards of the Carson Scholars Fund, showing year after year leadership in the classroom and the community. So, the 2019 recognized scholars are Lindsay Dreheim, grade 12, Smithsburg High School, number of times, received eight. Sarah Freshour, grade seven, Boonsboro Middle School, number of times, one, three. Abigail Kittle, grade 10, Smithsburg High School, number of times, recognized, seven. Grace Kittle, Grace Kittle, grade nine, Smithsburg High, number of times, one, five. Christopher Lobley, grade six, Northern Middle School, number of times, recognized, two. Nora Keller, grade eight, Western Heights Middle School, number of times, recognized, And Anna Mooney, grade nine, Barbara Ingram, School for the Arts, number of times, one, Congratulations, students.
Anybody wants to get a picture? If we can get out of the way.
Principals. Okay, congratulations.
Good evening, President Williams, Board of Education members, and Dr. Michael. Thank you for this opportunity this evening to present a proclamation of April as School Library Media Month. With me this evening are Mrs. Pam Rubish, Library Media Specialist at Rockland Woods Elementary, and Mrs. Kathy Davidson, Library Media Specialist at Clear Spring High School. We are thankful to have the opportunity to share data, statistics, and program information with WCPS students and staff in the community throughout this month. Information about our resources and materials, both print and digital, our lessons on digital citizenship and research, our activities to promote reading and literature appreciation, and new this year, our coding, robotics, and computational thinking opportunities. It is an honor to serve the school system in the capacity of library media specialists. The proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the school library is to ensure that students and staff are effective users of ideas and information, and whereas the library media specialist's role is to provide the leadership and expertise necessary to ensure that the school library is an integral part of the instructional program of the school, and whereas the Board of Education has entrusted the library media specialists in each school to teach the skills of locating and using information through traditional resources and new technologies, to provide literature appreciation activities, and to guide and encourage content and recreational reading to every student. And whereas lifelong learning begins and is systemically developed through the school library curriculum of the elementary and secondary schools, and whereas the school library contributes to the individual growth and development of all students while fostering both excellence and equity in education. Whereas the library media specialists of Washington County have dedicated themselves to work for quality school libraries for all students, therefore, be it proclaimed that April 2019 is observed by Washington County Public Schools as National School Library Month. Thank you.
I'll have a few items submitted later on in the program.
At this time, we'll have public comment, and I have one individual who signed up in advance. Gabrielle, before you begin, I'd like to read from Policy KD, if I may. This is regarding procedures at business meetings. Each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged but not required to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may have up to five minutes to present. Mr. Bickford down here is our official timer, so he has some cards.
I have 30 seconds left.
Okay.
And then this is obviously stopped.
All right, thank you.
So, good evening, Board of Education and Superintendent Michael. My name is Gabrielle Ryder, and I'm a sophomore at Smithsburg High School. The transition from middle school to high school was a new experience for me. Of course, the coursework was different, but the biggest difference was the atmosphere. My friends would sit at lunch crying because their anxiety or depression was too much for them to handle that day. Last year, at Smithsburg High School alone, we had three students attempt to commit suicide throughout the year. When the first one happened, I knew I could not just sit by and do nothing. My friends and the people I went to school with were hurting, and that's when Stop Sigma was created. Stop Sigma is a mental health initiative that I created to bridge the gap between people that who needed help and the resources that could help them. Last year, we hosted our first event at Smithsburg High School. The event was held on April 10th and was two hours long, and we had 50 people attend. Brook Lane Potomac Case Management, the Mental Health Center, and other mental health facilities around the county were invited to participate. The first hour of the event was a fair, which each invited organization had a table which they can pass out information to the attendees and also talk one-on-one with the attendees. The second hour of the event was presentations from the facilities. They presented on their organization and also a topic regarding mental health such as advocacy, mental health in general, depression, suicide, the impacts of social media on mental health, as well as others. This year, we have greatly expanded our project. This year, we will have two events. The first event was a day event that happened last Tuesday. In a classroom at Smithsburg High School, Brook Lane, the school safety hotline, and a representative from the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention and the Sheriff's Department presented. Our on-site Brook Lane therapists talked about different mental health illnesses and the services Brook Lane provides in school as well as out of school. The representative from the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention also talked about his journey with bipolar disorder as his journey with whether, how he accepted help along his way. The school safety hotline and the Sheriff's Department also talked about the tip lines that they offer. This presentation was recorded and will be edited very soon by me and my principal, Gary Willow. This presentation will then be sent to every middle school and high school in the county. Our second event will be almost exactly the same as last year's evening event. The entire purpose of these events is to let people know what resources are out there and just how to access them. As well, some of the organizations that we invited for this year's evening event include Brook Lane as well as the Jack D. Barr Center for Well-Being. Meredith Health will be coming in as well as other mental health facilities around the county. It will be hosted at Tech High from April 10th from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and I'd like to extend an invitation to all of you to attend. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Gabrielle. We don't respond at this time, but we will later if it's the will of... We don't respond at this time, but we will later if it's the will of individual board members, so thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak? Yes, sir.
John Croker from Boonesboro, Maryland. I'd just like to begin by thanking all of the individuals who went down to the march for our schools in Annapolis on March 11th. We had two busloads from Washington County teachers, students, ESPs, and others who, after their hard day at work, took the time to jump on a bus at four o'clock. It was a very strong showing, and I was proud to be with them. I'd also like to thank Mr. Stalfer for coming down to the rally. It really meant a lot to have your support there. And I met many teachers who said they had you for a teacher, and they all said good things about you. So, that's my first comment. I had a question about the policy that was enacted to higher collection agency to get delinquent money for lunches. I'm wondering if you can give us an update on how much has been recovered, how that's working, and whether you're likely to continue it. And last but not least, I've heard a lot of people talk about graduation rates and herald their success, but I was quite disturbed on reading the 2019 data book from the Maryland Higher Education Commission. It states that the remediation rates for Washington County high schools enrolled at Maryland Public Colleges and Universities is approximately 58 percent, the third highest in Maryland. It seems that we can and must do better. Abraham Lincoln said, "Teach the children so we don't have to teach the adults." And I'm wondering how the Board may be able to take a really serious look at this and see what can be done to bring down the remediation rates in Washington County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Croker. Is there anyone else that would like to use this time for public comment to come forward? Okay, now's the time for board member response to public comment. Mr. Bigford.
I'd just like to thank Gabrielle. I read Chris's blog, and he mentioned your program, and I said I'd love to hear more about it, and I think I sent that yesterday, and here you are tonight. So, thank you very much, and I'm just really honored to have you as a student in this county because if there are more like you doing those kind of, which I'm hearing a lot about your generation, that your generation is pitching in to handle these kind of problems, and there are many. So, thank you, because I know that's tough, and you've got enough work to do, and you're doing this on the side, but it sounds like you're really making a difference. So, thanks for inviting us. I'm certainly going to try to make the April event.
Gabrielle, is that your mom and dad, your family?
Yes.
I would like to thank mom and dad for raising such a wonderful young lady. I'm sure your other children are going to follow in their footsteps, but that program, to take that on as a challenge, congratulations, and I hope you with a lot more success in the future, and thanks, mom and dad, for what you've done.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank you for coming and congratulate you on your award. I saw the article in the paper. That was very nice and very well deserved, and I think some members of your family go to our church, Washington Square United Methodist, and we have the article up on our bulletin boards. We're very proud of you. Thank you for all you're doing.
Gabrielle, I'd like to thank you also for your empathy and for your willingness to step up and address a need. I think it's a wonderful thing that you're doing, and I thank you for that, and you made an awesome presentation. I know that it can be nerve-wracking to speak before a panel such as this, but you did a fine job, and I'm hopeful that I can make your event as well. So, thank you again for being here, and thank you for what you're doing. Anyone else? Okay, that concludes Board Member Response to Public Comment. Under Old Business, our first item of consideration is the second reading of proposed changes to policy JLF, Reporting of Suspected Child Abuse and Child Neglect. Good evening, Mr. Trotta.
Good evening. During the Board of Education's Public Business Meeting conducted on March 5th, the Board approved the first reading of the proposed changes to policy JLF. The community has been provided with an opportunity to offer comments on the proposed changes. We have not received any comments. At this time, the Policy Committee is requesting the approval of the second reading of this policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Is there a motion?
Madam President, I move to approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy JLF entitled, Reporting of Suspected Child Abuse and Child Neglect.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Discussion, questions? Mrs. Fisher, would you like to begin?
Just want to say that this was initiated because of some changes in the Annotated Code of Maryland, and we brought the policy up to date with the needed changes.
Any discussion, any questions? If not, the motion is on approval of the second reading of proposed changes to policy JLF entitled, Reporting of Suspected Child Abuse and Child Neglect. All those in favor? Okay, we're unanimous, and the student member concurs. Thank you, Mr. Trotta. Next area is New Business, and we have none to conduct, so we'll go back to the second half of the superintendent's report. Dr. Michael.
Thank you, President Williams. A thank you to start with, our Wellness Committee, consisting of benefits and HR and a lot of staff members from around our school system, as well as Meredith and our help staff, put on a wellness seminar, team event, yesterday. It was very well attended, and we really appreciate all the community partners who helped make that successful. So, just my thanks to our team members that did a lot of work to pull that together, and for staff members who came out and participated in that. Also, I'd like to offer my congratulations to Principal James Alshare at North Hagerstown High School. He was named Maryland Association of Student Council's Principal of the Year. I think Chris is going to leave in a few minutes, so I'm probably taking away maybe something he was going to say at the end, but I think he's going to be leaving here before he gets a chance to comment from the board members. Mr. Principal Alshare was the third principal in 30 years to have been recognized for this honor as Principal of the Year by the Student Government Councils. Also, Jesse Orth was named Maryland Association Student Council Advisor of the Year, so that is our third Advisor of the Year in 30 years. So, we're very pleased with the recognition and congratulations both to Principal Alshare and to Mr. Orth, and we'll have them here at a future board meeting to be recognized. For students on this Friday, there's no school. It's a professional day. Teachers will be doing grades and be a professional half-day with principal-led efforts there, so no students, no school for students on Friday. End of the marking period is why we're not having school for teachers to do grades. Secondary grades will be officially posted online on April 12th. Elementary grades will be officially posted online April 15th, and report cards, we started to print report cards again, this is a backup to someone that might not have online materials that, those will go home on April 18th. Washington County Board of Ed are here at the Center for Educational Services, is going to be hosting the Evirethon. I was involved in the Evirethon many, many years ago as a teacher, so we wish all of our teams from Boonesboro, Clear Spring, Hancock, Smithburg, and Tech High good luck. I think that is next Friday, April 12th, that will actually be participating here on site. If you look out back, you'll see a pit that's been dug in preparation for that. So, with that, that concludes my report for the seat.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. Personnel action, Dr. Fisher.
Good evening, Mrs. Williams and board members. As discussed earlier in closed session, there's several staff changes for your review. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Is there a motion?
Move to accept the personnel actions discussed earlier today.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Any questions? Okay, the motion is to approve personnel actions as discussed in closed session. All those in favor? Okay, six affirmative votes. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Mr. Stalper is abstaining.
President Williams, if I might, I would like to publicly announce and thank Jeremy Jacoby, longtime principal at South Hagerstown High School, becoming the central office as Director of Student Services, School Counselors, and Student Health. He's going to bring a wealth of information and knowledge to that position. He'll be missed at South High, and will be making an announcement about a South High principal in the near future, but we do want to congratulate Mr. Jacoby for joining the team here as the director. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, under Reports to the Board, we'll have a legislative briefing on the 2019 Maryland Legislative Session to date. Good evening, Mrs. Kay.
Thank you to all of the board members. It is a pleasure to be here. There is, there are five more really working days left in the General Assembly. It ends at midnight next Monday, and when the clock strikes midnight, the session is over. They're not allowed to extend it. We call it signee die, and we all look forward to it. As you are aware, there's a lot still going on, and some of the most important bills are going, are still going on, I would say. But I'm going to go over first a few of the other bills in no particular order, but you have expressed concerns about the bill that's pending. It's passed the House but not the Senate, and it's the Senate Committee about the drinking water standard again, or the standards of lead in your water. You've tested all your outlets for 20 particles per million and have made accommodation relative to those, but this bill would take that level down to five units per million, and Mr. Prue has told me that, or told us that that involves then several hundred more adjustments to be made, and that the water system here is almost at two to four parts per million, and therefore it gives almost no latitude for you to have any, anything in your pipes that would add to that. This bill passed the House, but it is sitting in the Senate EHEA Committee. We don't know where it's going. We have made points about the effects of it, and MAB is opposing it. We all understand that the best situation is to have no lead in the water, but five parts per million is very, very low. I think that 15 parts per million is the federal standard, and that's what hopefully they're aiming at. So, this may involve some, we hope the bill will die, or at least be changed to 15 rather than five parts per million. But even lowering it now from 20 to 15 would create a problem that should have been dealt with in the original bill a few years ago. Secondly, House Bill 725 is about restorative approaches, and it is, it was a pretty strong bill when it started, but now it is saying that they should, at the federal, at the state level, adopt guidelines relative to, and that each jurisdiction then would adopt guidelines about restorative practices, and you would have to say in your guidelines that the primary purpose of any disciplinary measure is rehabilitative and restorative. And so, but it's one of those bills that started out with many pages, and as you can see, virtually all of several pages have been amended out so that the bill is, excuse me, is rehabilitative, restorative, and educational. But, so it's, again, looking at the goal of disciplinary action, but also still giving you a fair amount of latitude. It's not, it's not as prescriptive as the bill started out being. The Safe Schools Act of 2019, the governor submitted, and when the governor submits a bill, it then becomes sponsored by the President of the Senate and the Speaker of the House. So, these bills that you've seen that say by the President that may not be moving is because often the governor's bills are not picked up by the legislature, but this one appears to be, it's passed the Senate, may pass the House, but it doesn't do anything really drastic. It creates within the School Safety Center a Safe Schools Maryland program, which is more of a training program. It offers services and assistance to jurisdictions who want to take part in it. It is totally discretionary, but probably things that you would want to take advantage of because they'd be useful in helping you strengthen your safety program. I mentioned last month, House Bill 1019. This is the one that says that when there is a new assessment test adopted, that the state cannot, for the first year until it's been used for a year, they cannot require that there be a certain passage rate, a passage level of that test to be graduated, knowing that it takes time to test a, an assessment technique, a tool, and see whether it's valuable. But it has this very strange section that's, and it's, again, applies to the State Board that says the State Board may use the assessment to determine up to 20 percent of a student's final grade in a course in the subject of the assessment. Well, that's something you do, not something that the state does. Again, this one's in the Education Committee in the Senate. What we're finding this year is that the House side has passed lots and lots and lots of education bills. The Senate Committee is killing lots and lots and lots of bad, or moderate, education bills, or I would say ones that we want to die. So, it's, each year it can be very different. One House or the other can be the House that likes the bills and moves them, but this year, that's where it is. So, there's still a lot of bills sitting in the Education Committee of the Senate, and many of those may make and may not, and so that's why we keep checking every day to see what's going on. I think that you've been hearing about the bill that would prohibit the availability of polyurethane, styrofoam plates, cups, et cetera, in schools and in businesses. So, that appears that it's going to be in effect, and what the cost ramifications will be for you for that is something I'm sure your staff is working on. A bill that started out being very prescriptive and very expensive in which you were going to have to do lots of testing for vision, and there was going to be a requirement that you provide a lot of glasses for students, et cetera, et cetera, has now been changed to a study. So, it's still, we don't know when it'll come back next year, but we always like it when something that was way too big and way too something that was way too big and way too expensive turns into a study that can maybe produce something of value by the next year, but not, but be modified in, in what happens. So that one's good news. A lot of these are fine so far. The bill relative to students with reading difficulties. Again, this bill has been, you can see, again, pages marked out, omitted. This is now leaving really to each local jurisdiction, each school system, to choose an assessment tool to screen and ident, to screen to identify students at risk of reading difficulties. But the state is not saying use this one or use that one, and you must do it on this schedule or that schedule. So this is a, a bill that really reflects the understanding that local boards should have the rights to, to administer their, their systems. But, so this would be primarily at the young age. The test that you choose must have phonological and phenome, phenemic, is that right? Awareness and processing. I don't know what that means. I hope you do, or your staff does. So that this will require, though, that you be really focusing in on those children who are having difficulty learning to read, and that then this, the bill will require that the parents be notified when you find that there are such difficulties, and that there'll be supplemental reading support provided to those children. So this is not a surprise bill. This is certainly something that's been talked about for some time, and something which I think you're already dedicated to. The, one bill that, again, I haven't asked to have this analyzed in terms of where you stand on, on your, in your current programs, but the goal, this now, again, it's a bill that started out saying you must, and then it has gotten modified to establish a goal that, that elementary school children each have 150 minutes of outdoor activity or PE each week. 90 minutes of that would be PE, and the other minutes could be recess. But you can't, and that would require that you can't take away recess for disciplinary purposes. So, and then they also calls it on developing a wellness monitoring and implementation plan. So, again, this is a goal that you have to be looking toward, and you do have to let the State Board know how you're doing on that. And, and again, it, it applies primarily to elementary school, but then it talks at one point about recess, if you have recess for your middle schools, but I, I don't know that you do. Perhaps you do. So, again, it's, it's not, these, these are not bad bills. None of these are things that give us a lot of heartburn, although the lead, the lead in the, in the water probably is, is the most heartburn so far. The State Board of Education is going to be expanded, if this bill is finally through, by adding two teachers and one parent. The parent, the governor would make the appointment of, of the parent at, from a list provided by the PTA, and the, the governor would appoint the teacher members who received the highest number of votes of any election by the teachers in the state. So it would, could be a statewide election for two teachers, one in the lower grades, one from the upper grades, who wanted to be on the State Board of Education, and there would be a statewide vote. It sounds a little un, unlike, unrealistic, but, but that's what the bill is calling for. And it does appear that that is going to occur. So that is, that, that will create some difference, I think, in the State Board of Education. So we can see where that goes and how it works out. The bill on community schools, there's reference, of course, in Kerwin, too, community schools, but there's a separate bill that defines what community schools are, and you'd have to have a dedicated staff member, and of course, they're offering to fund that person for you. To coordinate support programs that address out-of-school learning barriers for students and families that may include tutoring, English, English language learner courses, early childhood development and parenting classes, college and career advising, employment opportunities, citizenship education, food pantries, school-based mental and physical health services. And so this bill is appearing to pass, and it, again, it defines what is a community school. There has to be a parent group, and that there has to be other community groups that are tied to the school in order to provide the wraparound services that, that a community school is, is to, to offer. And the community school is, it means a public school that establishes a set of strategic partnerships between the school and other community resources that promote student achievement, positive learning conditions, and the well-being of students, families, and the community. So, and I know you have some schools that already have a good many wraparound services, and this would perhaps give them more definition and maybe even some resources. Getting on to the, the hottest items in the system. Our hottest item, Senate Bill 13, is still sitting in the Judiciary Committee, and it's very likely to sit there right through signee die without a vote, but I don't know that. I did meet today, and I speak particularly to Mr. Stauffer, who has lived through this, the hearings on this bill particularly. I met today with the Vice Chair Delegate Adderbury, who in the hearings was very, very much opposed to the bill. And we had a very nice meeting, a very cordial meeting, and a very calm meeting. She, I think, better understands what it is we're trying to accomplish, and that this is the end of the process where we're trying to get students back out of the juvenile system and help them get home and back to their home communities, rather than it being at the start of the system. She did suggest that the people from the Public Defender's Office had said to her there was some way they might work, that we might be able to work it out. So I did speak with them this afternoon, but they, they say they're just against the bill. So I'm, I'm not sure how, I will convey that back to Delegate Adderbury, but we haven't given up yet, is all I got to say. However, there is a bill, House Bill 606, which has passed, which establishes a Juvenile Justice Reform Council, looking at all of the juvenile justice issues. And should we not get our bill through, we certainly will ask that that, that issue be put before this group in a specific way. It includes three senators and three members of the House of Delegates, and hopefully we would have representation through that, and then a lot of other, you know, the head of school system and juvenile justice, juvenile services, and various other, and the public defender and so forth. So that will be available to us for certain if we don't get passage of Senate Bill 13. You're probably all aware from reading the paper that the school calendar bill was vetoed by the governor, and then it was, the veto was expected, as was expected, was overridden by the Senate and the House. So the school calendar bill is now law. It was an emergency bill, so it is now in effect. And as I mentioned last time, it includes language such that if the bill is petitioned to referendum, the referendum language that would go in the sample ballot is prescribed in the bill itself. So, but nonetheless, it appears that it gives you latitude this, for the coming year and the year following, to adjust your calendars as you wish, because a, a referendum vote, if there is one, would come in the November 20 election and be affected, it would affect the bill, I presume, after that time, and so it would be the start of the next school year. So that is an interesting opportunity, perhaps. The minimum wage bill also was vetoed by the governor and overridden, so that over the next few years, the minimum wage in Maryland will go up to $15 an hour. I think it's a 10-10 now, and it would go up to 11 next year, and, and gradually go up to 15 by 2025, I think it is. And for smaller businesses, it, it has another year or so to, to be accomplished. I have to compliment all of you for the interest you've been taking, but particularly your staff this year, starting with the superintendent, who comes up with a question every day or so about something that's happening in the legislature. And of course, Carol Costello did wonderful job testifying on Senate Bill 13. And Jeff Prue has been doing a great deal of work, and probably a lot of others who I'm not naming. Of course, Jamie and, and, Jamie Brown and, and Mr. Trotta, who I talk with almost daily. And, but you're being heard. You're thinking, you're making, you're shaking some things up down there this year. The school construction bill, which was out there and sitting around for a while, and the bill that allows school systems to build schools using fund, bond funding through the stadium authority. Suddenly, one night, there was an amendment of 27 pages, and the next day, they voted on the bill in committee and took it to the floor of the House, and it passed. Well, that's the bill that calls for 92% of the funding through this, using, using the stadium authority, going to the seven big counties, and only 8%, or less than 8% of the money going to the other 17 counties. This seems patently inequitable. And so we, I guess, I'm not sure who did, did, did Mr. Prue do the, the chart that I think you all have seen, that this wonderful chart that shows how much each school would get if it was based on their population. We know that school construction money is not just based on population, but, but, but that's a good starting point. And, and it shows that, you know, almost all of the 17 counties would get less than their fair share, and almost all of the big counties would get more than their fair share. And so we wrote some, rewrote amendments and suggesting some changes, of course, to that. It was very interesting, and in that when a bill is coming over to the second House toward the end of the session, they often make it a sponsor-only bill, as they did with Senate Bill 13. But we were able to have Carol and a principal from Montgomery County at the table with Senator Seraphini. However, what, when, when the House of Delegates Chairman McIntosh and the sponsor of this bill came over, they brought with them the six county executives. And the six county executives were all allowed to speak and say how wonderful the bill was, and how great it would be to have all this money. But none of the rest of us were allowed to speak. Well, I did send off a nice cheerful little intense note to the Budget and Tax Committee people, or the people that are on the committee to, that were hearing the bill, because I, I think it was very, it was, it was inappropriate that they were allowed to speak, and that no voices from the opposition or for the, for demanding amendments were able to speak. We do understand, though, that this bill may not go, that the Senate Committee is not really sure that it's timed to have this school construction program, and that there, we're hoping that it just dies for the year. The other thing we did, the, that made the injustice even greater, was that for the, for 13 of those 17 counties, there is a provision that would give them some planning, they would get planning money for projects, which they don't, current, nobody currently gets. But, but there were still four counties left out, and that, and it, because they said it would, counties under 20,000, well, I think you have 22,000. So we've asked that if they pass the bill, they raise that to 30,000. That would, the four counties are Washington, Carroll, Charles, and Hartford. And if you went from 20 to 30, it would take in everybody but Hartford. So, you know, again, we're, we're not big, we're not little, we're not rich, we're not poor, we're, you know, we're, we're a middle county that has to fight for its rights because we often get left out. So we're still fighting that one, and, but, but, but this chart sort of went viral. It was very helpful to have it done. And then the statements that, that the, that we all were satisfied, there was a statement sort of that all the smaller counties really had met their needs. And this chart came from you all, again, that showed how old the average schools are, the average age of schools in each county, and you're still sort of in the, up among the top, the seventh. And that, that it, all the needs are, needs are not met. So we're still working on that one. It seems hopeful that the bill is not going to pass, but if it passes, we feel that we probably will get the, raised from 20 to 30,000. But whether anything else would happen relative to the spread of the money, we, we don't really know. But they know what we think, and that's important. Then, of course, we come to Kerwin. Kerwin is a moving target, but a pretty stable moving target. It's not, the, yesterday afternoon, for like four hours or more, we sat through their discussion of amendments in the House Education Committee, and then it went to the Budget and Tax Committee later yesterday. We were able to point out something about eligible schools for the, for the community schools, and how those, how those counts are done, and, and at what point in time they're done. We were, we were partially successful in getting the amendments on. They talked about the amendments that, who all did work on those, you and Mr. Prue, and that would, we first asked that, that the level of, of poverty not be at 80% to out, make a school eligible, but that it be at 70%, because that would bring in three more schools in, in this county. We were told, we were, I mean, that the discussion revealed what we knew, that the budget's already been passed, the budget is based on the hundred and some schools that are, that are at 80, and that there was not really a way that they could make it less for this year, but that the Kerwin Commission wants it to go down, and they expect in the next years to have it go down to as low as 55%. So although it's not lowered this year, we can expect that the poverty level for eligibility will be going down to 70 or 60 or even 55 over the next few years, which would, it then make a number of your other schools eligible. And then there also was a very static time that, that the ratio was to be established, and we made the point that that needed to be updated as new data is we made the point that that needed to be updated as new data is brought in every year. And the wording they used is a little peculiar, but, but they did accept that concept. So, that amendment went in on the Senate side. Now, today, this afternoon, the House was working on its amendments, which may be different, but we have the same material before them, and of course, I wasn't able to attend that meeting. But they even amended the title. Somebody said, "You know, this title doesn't make sense. It's not the blueprint for Maryland, it's the blueprint for education." So, it's, so they amended it to say, "The Education Blueprint for Maryland's Future." So, whether that amendment will stick or not is not really too relevant, but it was interesting to have somebody point that out. And, so there was a lot of discussion, and there were, they still haven't defined, redefined teacher. The definition of teacher was, left out a number of people that are in the same bargaining unit with the teachers. And so, that was discussed, but every, everybody's grouping is a little different, and so they finally just left it as it was. So, I'm not going to go over any other amendments that were made, because again, the House may make very different amendments, and these amendments were on the House, on the Senate floor today. And then, there, the various senators tomorrow will be bringing their own amendments. So, there could be things happening. On the whole, though, I think there's a pretty stable concurrence around what this bill says and what it does. And we know that it helps out on things like pre-K, and the state contributing more toward the, toward that, and the, and the community schools and special ed, but not, not diminishing at all what, what local governments are responsible for. The MOE stays in place, and there is a responsibility that is going to be shared over, in the big, in the big bill they keep talking about next year, which will be the real Kerwin bill, that, you know, it, this is not, this is not something the state is doing. It is going to be something that is a partnership with local governments and the state. And the Maryland Association of Counties is very much at the table, understanding that there's a lot of work to be done, and a lot of information to be digested over the next year as the big Kerwin bill is done. However, we think this bill will pass. It will probably pass, people suggest, the last day. Just, you know, you have to, you know, you have to negotiate back and forth, and the conference committee will probably be meeting at about 10 o'clock on Monday night to finalize it. And as you recall, we had one bill last year that went through at about five minutes to 12 on the last night. And, so, you don't give up hope until that bell rings. So, I'm not going to go into the budget. The education was generally funded in accordance with all of its past formulas and so forth. And, the capital budget, if, when you add up all the bits and pieces for aging schools and so forth, is substantially bigger than it was in previous years. I think they're claiming it's 500 million. But, again, it, that pulls in some things, like for the school systems that are growing fast, that get extra money and so forth. So, it's basically the same formula for you all. So, that's where we are. And I would be happy to try and answer questions about any bills that you might want to know about. And I will be busily in Annapolis, or on the, on the, listening to it on the, on the computer. You can all listen to it anytime you want. That the, you know, you can watch the committees, and you can listen to the floor debate. So, there'll be a lot of decisions being made between now and next Monday. Are there any questions, or have I worn you out?
Mr. Stauffer?
Two things. How can, to sit on this board, you cannot be a public school employee while sitting on this board. So, how can two teachers sit on the state board when they're still employed as teachers?
Because the law is being changed.
Pardon me?
Because the law is being changed, saying they can't.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. One thing, I did, going back to Kerwin.
They probably have to look at the ethics provisions at the state level, because there would be certain things that would directly affect them, that they would have to recuse themselves from or not participate, and that's an issue they're going to have to address if the bill passes.
Yes, there are, there are things in the bill that they must recuse themselves from.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Let me go back a little bit. Oh, you had two things, I'm sorry.
Well, the second thing was the reportable offense bill. Rather than die in committee, I'd rather see the committee take an up-and-down vote on it, and they're on the record then whether they're opposed or opposed. I don't know why they just don't do that. I'd like to see that done.
They sometimes put things in the drawer.
Oh, I know they do.
And that keeps them from having to have discussions they may not want to have. Or they know the committee's very divided and emotional about things.
One last comment. Let's hope they don't turn the clock back to like, 9 o'clock, you know, when it's midnight.
They can't do that. They cannot do that. Back to Kerwin. The thing that was added, and I'm sure this had to do with discussions with the governor in order to, for him to release some of the funding that is necessary to fund the program at the level that they have agreed to in the budget. The inspector general position is being established. This is fraud, waste, and abuse, civil rights, and various other things that this person, who will be selected by the governor, the treasurer, and the attorney general. So, that person, and that person has subpoena power, and an office full of attorneys and other people, to look into those, a variety of matters in the public schools, and the private schools. So, that is something the governor wanted, and that's something the governor has gotten in the Kerwin bill. There also still is the accountability section in, where in the legislature, through the legislative audits, can also do performance audits of anything, you know, your graduation rate, or your, you know, whatever they want to do, performance audits, etc. So, the intensity of accountability is being raised hugely. And, so, it's, it's, it's going to be somewhat different, but it may not, it may not be a painful thing at all. It may actually be something that gets at things that need to be gotten, and that leaves alone places that are doing a good job.
Anyone else?
Mrs. Kate, thank you so much. Thank you for your many emails that you send us, keeping us updated, and thank you for the work that you're doing there, all the legwork. We look forward to having you back when May 7th.
Thank you, I'll be here then.
For another update, and hopefully, all those bills that need to die will die, and all those that are, are going to be beneficial for us, for the work we do for students. I guess we shall see.
We shall see. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to board member committee reports. We'll start with curriculum instruction.
Curriculum instruction committee met on March 26th. We were given information from our homeless coordinator about the programs that are in place to help these students and their families succeed. We were also given an overview of a program, of programs such as PPIS and OLVEAS, that concentrate on reinforcing and modeling positive behavior. And we spoke with Drs. Palmer and Akers briefly about discipline in our schools, and we'll speak with them more on our, in our next meeting, April 23rd.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Mr. Bickert, Finance Committee?
No update, except we're still scheduled to meet April 30th, Tuesday, at 8:00 a.m.
Okay, thank you. Facilities, Mr. Gessford?
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Williams. The facilities committee met and had quite a discussion concerning many topics. The first one was the downtown project. Rob Rollins gave us an update. It looks like the steel will be started this coming week or so. And they were hoping to get started, but he wasn't really sure, so, Mr. Reinhardt said it's there. I haven't been down there, so.
The street's been blocked this week.
Yeah. Okay. And, he, we gave an update on the Sharpsburg Elementary Project. It is going, it is on time and going well. Our next meeting will be held down there at the Sharpsburg Project. We're going to be going over that. Under community partnerships, we talked about the Wim Sport donation, Moundstone Communication Project, the tower down there, the cell tower is up in, if anyone hasn't seen it, I do have a picture for our board members, if not, stop out and see it, it looks pretty nice. Boonsborough Auditorium Project was discussed, and where we are with that. Mark Mills gave us an update on our water quality, and we had also talked about the prison solar array, that we were talking about solar panels down there. And Chris, or Chad Criswell, gave us an update on the developments in the area, McCleary Hill, Harper Park, and the new David Law Properties. So, we hope that some of you will be able to attend, if you can come down to the, May 9th, 8:00, we'll be meeting at Sharpsburg Elementary School to go over that project and get some updates with that. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Bickert. Mrs. Fisher, Policy?
Policy Committee has met twice since our last board business meeting. We met on March 26th, and we also met earlier today. On the 26th, we recommended JLF for second read, which of course, took place earlier this evening, and passed on second read. We then made some changes to policy BDF, which is entitled Advisory Committees to the Board of Education. And, the review that we had started then on the 26th continued this morning, and we also began, we finished BDF, but then we also began reviewing the exhibits that go along with that policy. We haven't finished those exhibits, so we will be meeting on April 23rd at 9:15. We're going to be meeting for two hours that day, and hopefully finish revising those exhibits. If time allows, we'll also begin reviewing policy JICJ, which is entitled "The Use of Personally-Owned Electronic Devices." Meetings are open to the public, and we usually meet in the room right beside this auditorium.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Reinhardt, Human Resources?
The HR Committee will be meeting at the end of this month.
Thank you. Under miscellaneous business, future agenda items, you have a few future agenda items that were included in your packet. There's an enrollment forecast coming up on May 7th. Mrs. Kate will be back on May 7th. And we have a construction update on the urban improvement project in Sharpsburg Elementary School in June. If you have any items that you would like to see on the agenda, please let a member of the Agenda Planning Committee know. I would like to remind my colleagues of a change in venue for our next meeting on April 16th. We will have our closed session and our business meeting at Boonsborough Middle School. And also, that evening is a public hearing. This will be an opportunity for the public to make any comment that they might wish to on the proposed school attendance zone realignment recommendations for the new Sharpsburg Elementary School. That public hearing will be held from 6 until 8:30, according to policy. We need to allow that much time, but I, depending on how many people we have come who wish to express their views on the matter, we'll see how long that meeting goes. It's recommended that you sign up in advance, and I do believe our policy asks that nine copies of your remarks, if you're planning to speak that evening, that you bring nine copies, so that board members could have your comments on paper. I don't think that it's necessary for you to sign up in advance, but it is encouraged. So, looking forward to that public hearing at our next meeting. And I think that's all I have with regard to future agendas and future meetings. So, we'll move on to board member comments. Would you like to begin down there, Mrs. Murray?
The only thing I have to say, it was great to see our pre-K student here tonight. She is such a joy, and I really enjoyed seeing her again.
The only thing I have is to thank the many staff members and our teachers who attended the, and students who took part in the Trilogy Art Competition again this year, and it's, I think, some of the artworks already going up. So, this is a chance for our student artists to submit work that then gets chosen to adorn our walls here, or, I think mostly here, sculptures though, too, correct?
Down the hallway.
Yeah. Also, their work is at Hegger Hall, and at the Trilogy Building, which is most commonly known for Capitol Women's Care being in there. So, it's a great way to spotlight our student artists and get their work seen throughout the community.
Thank you, Mr. Bickert. Mr. Stauffer?
Last Thursday, my wife and I had a chance to attend the third-grade wax museum at Jonathan Hager Elementary School, and we met some very famous people, some of the ones I remember. We met Albert Einstein, Babe Ruth, Wilma Rudolph, Jane Goodall flew in from Africa to attend there, and there were many, many others there, but kids did a great job on that.
Thank you. Mr. Gessford?
Yes, I was also able to attend the Determination Wax Museum event. Mr. Stauffer was there with many students, second year I've been there, and again, he did a fantastic job. But this past week, I'd just like to just throw out a thank you. I was able to attend a dedication ceremony for our Vietnam Memorial Downtown. Our own, Mr. Stauffer, a veteran of that conflict, was there to lay a wreath, and I'd like to thank him for his service and for his dedication of helping that memorial to succeed. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Mrs. Fisher?
I just want to thank those students who have been chosen.
... and scholars again. Each of you have a lot to be proud of. Keep up the good work.
Thank you, Mrs. Fisher. Mr. Reinhardt?
I appreciate it.
And I have nothing. So, if there's nothing further, adjourn. Thank you.